Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 26th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for today is Proverbs 20 verses 4 through 6. "Those too lazy to plow in the right season will have no food at the harvest. Though good advice lies deep within the heart, a person without understanding will draw it out. Many will say they are loyal friends, but who can find one that is truly reliable?" It's not very uplifting, but... Do you have a dog? Oh, no, you have a dog. Sorry. You had it last week.
Good morning, this is kennel number 19. She's a three to four-year-old female. She's available now. Very good temperament. We have 33 other dogs in the kennel, so come see her. Thank you.
I think she saw herself.
Under resolutions, we do not have investments, so appropriations?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No travel, bills?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners? Mr. Cortez?
Already?
Yes, already.
Oh my God. I do have one potential hire in our administrative staff I want to discuss. Also possibly some recommendations, and we still short a couple dispatches. I don't have it in my folder, but it's on my desk, we may get to that. Update on ongoing labor negotiations with the operating engineers at the bridge. Potential purchase of real estate that's been ongoing. In one pending legal matter. Should be a very short executive session, I don't have a lot this morning.
We have a tour of the courthouse at 2:00, looking forward to that.
At 2:00, but I don't have enough to entertain you until 2:00.
Well, we'll eat too.
I don't even know if I have enough to entertain you until lunchtime. So, isn't that amazing for a change?
Yes, it is.
But unless you want to eat lunch, we can have brunch. But all those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss those matters that I've outlined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approving with the reading of the minutes of July 19?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorize payment of $1,000 to Bush Funeral and Crematory Services, Alariah, for indigent veteran, A. Burton, Alariah, in accordance with the Ohio Revest Code 5901.25.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Community Development Amendment Resolution 16664 adopted October 19, 2016, Number 2 to Green Home Solutions Cleveland, in the amount of $3,960 for Georgina Boyle at 321 Deepwood Lane, Amherst, for home repair work. The amendment is to reflect this was PY14 and it should have been PY16 because the work was not started in that current cycle.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Award Contract to Solid Ground Construction Westlake in the amount of $9,020 for Elizabeth Swink at 4575 French Creek Sheffield Village for a grant for home repair work which includes contingencies.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Award Contract to Solid Ground Construction, Inc., Westlake, in the amount of $42,971 for Kimberly Myers at 301 Inwood Boulevard, Avon Lake, for home repair work which includes contingencies.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Is that the rain a mile?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Which one was that Commissioner?
Number 14?
14.
$42,000?
That's a major one.
It's a big one.
I think I've seen one that high.
It's a lot of work on that home up there, but they're eligible, and there's the callbacks, and it is grant money, and it's deed restricted, like they all are.
Every once in a while, we get big ones like that.
Maybe can Don explain it, I just haven't seen one that high before.
And I want him to stay here for 15 anyway, so I want to talk a little bit about that.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, I guess I would just like more information on this $42,971 for the...
The actual contract itself, or the scope of work, is roughly $39,000, and then we have the 10% contingency. We are allowed to go up to $45,000 total within a home. This house needs a wide variety of work. If I recall correctly, we're looking at roofing, furnace, bathroom, plumbing, electrical. This house definitely needs some work, but when we are done with this house, all code violations will be completely 100% addressed. There will be no other work that would be needed in this home, so that this home would then be not new, nowhere near new, but it is a good, solid, safe home that is continuing to contribute to the stability of the neighborhood, and then for the next generation of homeowners that would be looking to buy it in this neighborhood.
Just for clarification, because sometimes the public doesn't understand these programs, these homes can't be sold for a time specific, there's a lien, decreasing lien on the property. Should the home be sold or the people become deceased and it goes into probate, there's callback requirements on these funds. So there is no profiteering going on with regard to these grant funds. These funds are used to keep the community stabilized. Some homes do fall into disrepair. Excuse me. Apologize to just hanging on for the last couple meetings. You'll find that mostly these end up being seniors that have had not had the wherewithal to continue maintenance on homes for a number of years, and they find themselves with leaking roofs and damage to the foundations and depleted resources.
That's a street I grew up on.
Is it really?
And I was just trying to think of the house, and for some reason I can't quite picture. It seems like most of the homes on the street are in pretty good shape.
It was a long, long time ago when you grew up.
Yeah, I know.
Memories.
And that rot on the siding from those eggs, they're just penetrated now.
I know, I know. Wow. I just hadn't seen one that large before, that's all I just wanted to...
They're few and far between that come up into the 40s. We're typically in the mid-30s is where we typically top out, but this one definitely had a lot of work. It is needed, and again, you do know the neighborhood, it is a good, solid neighborhood, so keeping the assets in that neighborhood up to par is a huge stabilizing factor that protects not only that person and that home, but also the neighborhood at large.
Okay, I think I'm going to ask if I can excuse myself for not vote on this. As a result of my father's death, I inherited his property. It's on that street, I think would add to his value or keep his value up.
Sure. If you want, you're going to abstain then?
Abstain, yes, abstain.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Abstain.
Don't go anywhere.
You got it.
I'm going to have you talk about the next one, too, I was going to bring you out.
Award Contract to Vida Nuava, LLC, to execute the U.S. EPA Brownfield Area-Wide Planning Grant in the amount of $180,000 for the Broadway and 28th Street corridor in Lorraine.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Don, you're up.
There you go.
Thank you Board. This contract is a result of almost now six months of work. Originally started with us identifying an opportunity through U.S. EPA for some grant funds. We identified the U.S. EPA Brownfield Area-Wide Planning Grant Program, which provides up to $200,000 to provide for planning services for brownfield areas and that have a catalytic site, a site that if redeveloped could really transform a local community. So we were thinking, what better place than downtown Lorraine? What better place than the pellet terminal as being that One Keystone Project? As we continued to explore and look at the area, and what would it take to really allow that site to go? It was, well, clean up the corridor, so Route 57 was a natural, and we already had an inventory of what was going on on Broadway and East 28th from our assessment grant, and we'd actually invested a couple of dollars here and there on properties around that area, and developed an inventory of potential brownfields. We also had, at that time, as we were planning this, the closed Republic Steel Mill, again, another large site that if it were redeveloped would be very important in transforming that neighborhood and that corridor and the city of Lorraine and the county as a whole. So with that, we were able to begin to coalesce our ideas. We brought them to the administration of the county, which were then forwarded to the city of Lorraine, and we worked collaboratively with them to make sure that what we were proposing made sense. We were able to submit. There were only 19 applications funded across the country, and we were fully funded at $200,000. There were 76 applications across the country that were submitted, so less than, about 1 in 4, or 25% of the applications, were actually funded. We were one of them, which is to say something really good for the staff and who you've got working for you to be able to be that competitive. Working with purchasing, then, we put out the RFP for these services. We got over 30 responses or inquiries into it. I was nervous. If I had to read 30 RFQs, we'd still be reviewing them rather than awarding a contract, and our goal's been to move this as quickly as possible. We received a total of 10 submissions, nine of them were done complete and on time. Of those nine, we whittled the list down to about three, and then worked with the city of Lorraine and had them confirm our rankings, which is how we get to here today. Vida Nuova has done a large number of these throughout the country. They've actually done work in Toledo, so they're familiar with the state of Ohio. They have done waterfront projects along the east coast and in the Midwest. They have done large industrial operations with a titanium dioxide manufacturing facility, so translating that knowledge to a republic, which fortunately now I don't have to spend as much time on with the news breaking yesterday. But with the waterfront, the pellet terminal, and then working into the downtowns, both large cities and small. So they are a very good fit, it was very competitive. And the other thing is that they are very innovative in how they reach out to the public. So you're going to see not just a standard design charrette meeting where we all get together, put dots on a map, but you're also going to have Facebook, social media, polling going out. We're going to be working with the local clubs and whatnot to get the message out and to get feedback in, so that we understand what it is the community wants. This isn't us dictating to the city of Lorraine, this is what needs to happen. This is working together to understand what's going on, what the desires are, and how do we produce something that will then lead to an RFP. And that RFP will be sent to developers that have the experience, have the knowledge, and have an interest in Lorraine. So in a nutshell, started six months ago working on this and get to here today, and in about 18 months or so, we should have an RFP working with the city of Lorraine and looking for some really strong development along that corridor.
Who are we working with in Lorraine? I know when we started this, partners are shifting a little bit, so who's pivoting in Lorraine?
Currently, it is Mayor Rittenhour and then Safety Service Director Given. Had been Derek Furstein taking the lead as he's transitioning to a new career opportunity.
Yeah, that's pretty much why I was asking, you know, who's pivoting on this? I want to sit down with you, I want to, you know, put our heads together, and I want to really come up with a list of accomplishments that I want to see happen in some timeframes. It's been a bit of a struggle staying on course with issues in Lorraine recently, so I want to have a clear understanding of how to track the progress on this from our standpoint, because we're lead.
Exactly.
But it's going to be a great undertaking down, I'm really excited about, not so much Broadway, but down 28th, it's really a neglected corridor.
Yeah, there's some real opportunities there, and hopefully now that we've got some stability back with planning from Republic, and if they can pull that off and bring back, open up a blast furnace to make that pig iron.
Well, it's not huge, but it's something.
It is, and it takes a lot of dollars to invest to reopen a blast furnace.
Sure does. Back in the early 80s, I was in there chipping out that old stuff when I worked for Stein Co., we're doing those things for millions of dollars to get them up.
Yeah, I was just surprised that we were seeing any kind of brownfield dollars. I didn't think the administration was supportive of that, and I know these are planning dollars and implementing some things later.
Yeah.
Just concerned about if there's any hiccups, if anything's going to be interrupted.
Well, that's it, we have to be successful with this, because it was only several years back, if you couldn't tie jobs to brownfield dollars, you couldn't get the brownfield dollars. So we didn't even have to tie jobs to this one. But if you want future brownfield dollars after the planning, you're going to have to tie some jobs to those dollars. So this could lead to other dollars, but we're pretty successful. We have a couple, we have brownfield, we have EPA dollars going into the...
E and L.
E and L over on Baumhart, about $160,000 over there?
We'll have put in all total about $200,000 in federal dollars and $160,000 in local dollars.
On the cleanup over there.
On the cleanup, and that'll get us to the point where we can really begin to use that property and market it.
And how much did we put into the pellet terminal?
The pellet terminal, right now, we're looking at $3,000 to start, and that is to revisit and check all of the work the city of Lorraine previously did and determine what the next steps are. I am hopeful that our next step is going right to a remedial action plan, which would actually be essentially the specs for getting that site cleaned up to residential level of being able to develop that site.
And then we use EPA dollars down with chemical, right?
Correct. Phase 1, Phase 2, and the dollars right now are escaping me, at least $10,000, probably closer to 12 to 15.
And those are all federal dollars?
Those were all federal.
Economic development activities.
Correct. And then, yeah, also throughout the rest of the county as well, we've done work in Sheffield Village, Avon Lake, Oberlin, North Ridgeville.
And that was off that $600,000...
Correct.
...planning grant we got for remediation.
Doing the assessments, yes.
I'm only bringing that up for dialogue, because our folks don't realize all the federal dollars we're bringing back here and all the improvements we're making, getting sites ready on phase 1s, phase 2s, so that they're prepared to go in the future and getting ready for remediations.
From the U.S. EPA on water quality, with what we've been doing through both the district and the county out in Eaton Township, and throughout on invasive species, plus our brownfields, we are nearing the $4 million mark. And I'm still proud to say that we've been able, on a lot of the environmental, the ecological side with the Black River, those dollars have been invested in our local workforce and in our local businesses in supporting this effort, and you're beginning to see, you know, the fruits of that labor. We just took a phone call the other day from someone in Alariah Township looking for some assistance, and we were able to provide relatively easily. We've had the homeowners associations on the east side getting their people trained on how to handle invasives, so...
We just applied for $200,000 for another...
Actually, $550,000 that we're waiting.
Was it $550,000?
$550,000 for Fortune Ditch.
Were you rich and big, Don? Rich and big, I thought we thought $200,000 on that. So is that that restoration project?
Yes.
It's going to be $550,000?
Yes.
Okay, that's a little more than I thought we were...
Well, we'll be restoring, ideally similar to what we did in Eaton Township Park, another 800-plus lineal feet, another acre and a half of floodplain expansion, another three acre feet of stormwater detention in Eaton Township, every drop of water we can hold back is a plus. Also, we will be restoring and enhancing another 600 feet of Fortune Ditch that is in good shape. Plus, we're looking at ideally a 21-acre expansion of Oak Savannah that'll help complete, well, not complete, but will really tie together the Margaret Peak Reserve, and be doing another three acres of planning to provide a transition from the Oak Savannah and whatnot to Fortune Ditch. And all of that is designed to allow Eaton Township to continue on land that we do not have redeveloped yet and is still being farmed, to protect our waterways from any runoff coming off of the farm field, primarily sediment as they do no-till there, but also any fertilizer whatnot that might actually run off the land, so...
And let me also point out that the less water we push to the lake, it's the less water running to our cities, and they've been experiencing lots of problems. The water naturally goes that way, and whether the city likes it or not, it's going to make its way to the lake, so we can slow it, we can help out with the flooding up in the cities, and that's part of what we're turning, it's somewhat of a natural state, is helping out with, so all the residents of Lorraine County benefit from these changes.
Thanks, Don. Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Job and family, approve an internal lease agreement with JFS for $49,950 square feet, furnished office space at 42485 North Ridge Road, in the amount of $89,910 with monthly payments of $7,492.07.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Workforce, approve an internal lease agreement with WDA for $21,204, no, $21,204 square feet furnished office space at 42495 North Ridge Road, in the amount of $21,628 with monthly payments of $1,802.07.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Engineer, Men Resolution 17240, April 2017, entering contract with Geosci, Inc., Berea, for ongoing testing and inspection for Barrington Park Subdivision Number 7, Eaton Township. Amendment is to reflect the increase of $9,000 for a total contract amount of $15,000 and be paid from the MVGT account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve an entered contract for right-of-entry with ODOT to allow their contractors access to a section at Erie Avenue Baskel Bridge over Black River, Lorraine, for repair and construction.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez.
I have no additional comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis.
I don't really have anything for executive session. We're kind of going to wait and see with most of our time.
Commissioners' report.
Last Thursday, I attended the board meeting for Office on Aging. They're working on a strategic plan, trying to provide services to our seniors while their funding has continually decreased, while the needs have been increasing. A couple of the most urgent needs are food insecurities, the cuts to programs like we seen with our CDBG program, and just other ways that they were getting revenue, slowing down the amount of meals that they're able to provide for their Meals on Wheels program. They're not only getting a meal, when they get that meal, they're also getting a wellness check, so if something's happened, you know, they could be hurt and nobody would know unless they were there to get that meal, so it also gives them a little bit of companionship. Another issue, of course, is transportation, and it's not really our transit, they need actual door-to-door transportation, and also medication is a big issue. A lot of those prescriptions are costing them so much that they don't even get their prescriptions, so... The director actually provided us a map of all the counties that have dedicated money that goes to their, I think you all got a copy of that, dedicated money that goes directly to their Office on Aging, so might be something we want to consider in the future.
Did you make that? I was sick, so I wasn't able to make it. How did that go?
It was good. I mean, there's a lot of needs out there, and the needs keep growing, our population is getting older, and their funding is going down, just like everything, so they're scrambling, trying to figure out a strategic plan on how they're going to provide those services, so... Let's see, what else do we do here? Saturday, I was celebrity bartender at Bevins Food Supply. It was for the pit crew, and they fund, do fundraisers for pit bulls. There were many bands that were there that dedicated their time. They had belly dancing and mud wrestling, you guys missed out.
Wow.
Wow.
Lot going on there.
So which one were you in?
I was a celebrity bartender, I was not doing any of the extracurriculars.
Jello pits?
No.
For you?
Nope, nope, nope. It was fun, it was a lot of fun. We stayed, like, till late, so it was fun. What else? Yesterday, we had our Investment Advisory Committee meeting, and then I went out to, we all did, Avon Lake Democrats had a picnic out on the lake, and we had their guest speaker, Betty Sutton, who is hoping to be our next governor, so... It's a pretty busy week, a lot of good stuff going on, and my son Gavin turned nine, and he's just getting...
Grandson.
My grandson, what did I say, my son?
You said your son.
My grandson. Yeah, I don't want anybody to know that I got a nine-year-old grandson. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Yeah, it was a busy week, but probably most important, yesterday Solid Waste Policy Committee met, we're kicking off the beginning of our three-year planning process for the new plan moving forward. A lot of changes at the state level, a lot of appendices that have to be done, actually GT Environmental sent me the one from SUECO, the Southwest, the one, Columbus Franklin County, and it was 378 pages, lot of reading, so we're going through that, and then Jim and I then later recapped with GT and Keith Bailey about some of the issues against planning that we hope to be completed sometime May, June of 2020, so...
It's going to be a big plan this time, Commissioners.
Oh, it's a big plan.
A lot of things happening right now, a lot of changes at the state.
Right, so I'm hoping we can get everybody on board and get those issues moving, so...
Well, we have to have a plan circulating early next year, start the sign-off process.
Well, to get to the EPA for comments and everything, and then it's got to come back, but it's got to be done, I think May or June of 2020 is the expected date, unless we get it done a little bit earlier.
Well, we have to have all the signatures completed in, what, late '18, early '19?
No, 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 that's just when we have to send it for review.
For review?
Then they send it back to us with any changes going, and we have 90 days to do it, and then we got to send it back for their 30-day review, then we bring it back, and then we pass, the Solid Waste Policy Committee passes, and it goes to the Commissioners, City of Lorraine, and then outgiving it a six-month period for ratification.
So we get the signatures in '19?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the time.
I've got the schedule, Tony and I actually just put it on my desk this morning. GT just put its schedule monthly up.
Mike sent it up?
Yeah, Mike sent it out to me, because I want to know where we had to be, so... End of my report.
Just want to advise everybody about our ongoing talks about improving our lakefront here in Lorraine County. Our lakefront, Lorraine County Planning Meeting is now scheduled for Thursday, this Thursday, 6:00 PM, Lorraine High School, that's at 2600 Ashland Avenue, and looking for feedback, obviously, and thoughts and vision for the lakefront, and how residents and how residents see the future playing out for our lakefront here in Lorraine County. So, the first one, 6:00 PM this Thursday, Lorraine High, 2600 Ashland Avenue. And then the next planning session will be held in Avon Lake. That's on August 2nd. That's also at 6:00 PM. And that's going to be at the Lake House, right there on Lake Road, at 32756 Lake Road. We've had two of these planning sessions so far. These are kind of the two remaining sessions, and then there's going to be one general countywide get-together. You don't have to live in a lakefront community to attend. You know, we welcome any and all for your feedback, and some interesting concepts are coming out of that. And I think some things that folks will find very interesting and very exciting. Yeah, I was unable to attend the Lorraine County Office on Aging for their strategic planning, but can't stress enough the concern in this county with, with seniors being very concerned about where their next meal's coming from and being able to feed themselves. And, and that's, the strategic planning activity is going on right now, I think is really, really critical to the future. But, you know, we've gotta come up with some better ways to make sure that seniors who've done so much for our communities over all these years, you know, are treated with the dignity and respect they deserve in their final days here. The Lorraine County Township Association Meeting in Amherst Township, was unable to attend that, but understand the meeting went well. Also, the Avon Lake Dems had their picnic the other night. Sorry, had a long day yesterday, wasn't able to make that, but Gene Sikulick and the whole group, they always do an amazing job. Free hamburgers and hot dogs, and, and I'm sure Betty Sutton gave a really good talk. She was such a dynamic congresswoman for this area, and is going to be, you know, a very strong candidate there for governor, no question about that. Mexican Mutual on Saturday. Actually, I had my twin brother Marco with me over there to Mexican Mutual. First time he's been over there, and he really enjoyed it.
They were seeing doubles there?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah.
And cut him off.
Yeah, too many corones or something. But, but anyhow, he, yeah, really enjoyed that. That was their steak fry for their scholarship fund, and, you know, I say it over and over again, one of the friendliest places in Lorraine County is over at Mexican Mutual. So, it was just a real good time. And I just wanna thank everybody for all their prayers over the weeks, and, and thank everyone for the support during the time that my dad was going through his battle with cancer, and we had a visitation for him on Monday, and had the burial just yesterday. And the Knights of Columbus came out and did an awesome job, the American Legion Honor Guard.
They made service.
Oh, it was really nice, really nice. And I just wanna thank everyone here for the, the plants and the flowers and just the outpouring of support and love. And, and then he was intern at Western Reserve National Cemetery down there in Ritman, and boy, what a amazing operation down there. Everybody's very, very professional. It's first-class operation. And I think that completes my report, Madam President.
Commissioners will meet Monday at 10:00 AM for a special meeting, work correspondence.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anybody wishing to, all you need to do is tell us your name, come up to either one of these, and, and your address, and the floor is yours.
My name is Thomas Palmer. I live in Vermillion, 1680 Cooper Foster Park Road. I'm here to voice my concerns about the Northern Ohio Tactical Training Center on Cooper Foster in Brownhelm Township. I live in Vermillion. I'm part of Brownhelm Township. I've been to five trustees meetings, five months. We're getting nowhere with any resolution. This place is just starting. It's gonna be noisy. It's disturbing. It's rapid fire. It echoes in between the railroad tracks and where I live, up on the rise. It, it's really a terrible situation, and I'm looking for some help to get something done. I mean, it should be an indoor thing, not an outdoor that all my neighbors have to be disturbed by.
Jerry?
I'm aware of that place.
Were you on planning when it went through or not?
No. They, actually, it really didn't require a lot through the planning commission.
To zone within the township.
The reason we're aware of it is we had a, we had a work on it through the stormwater district. There was a lot of issues with how they were directing stormwater when they were reshaping the land a bit out there. That's how we're aware of it. But, there's no permit requirement through the county or any of that. They're planning on doing a lot of that out there. I, I understood. I, it, and I bet you it's gonna be pretty noisy out there, but the board has.
It's disturbing noise. It's rapid fire.
The board here has absolutely no authority over any of the activities out there. That's, that's a zoning issue, and that belongs to the township.
But the township says they can't do anything about it because the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals approved it.
Still, still a township. The township, the zoning Board of Appeal, and I don't wanna, I understand your concerns, sir, very much so. We found out about it because we had some stormwater issues, and we had to go out there, and we had to work with them because they were out of compliance with the way they were, they were draining the land and so forth. At that point, I was like shaking my head about a few things. But the zoning Board of Appeals is a township zoning Board of Appeals. We have absolutely no authority over them. Some days I wish we did. A lot of days, they, they make decisions that I wonder about, and each township has their own. And I don't even think the trustees that are elected in the townships have a lot of sway over those, those folks either. There's very little we can do.
Noise ordinances?
It, it's a, it's a local issue. It's a township issue. This, this is where sometimes the pieces.
Okay, let's talk property values, then. Because I can't sell my property now.
This is some, this is sometimes where the pieces of government don't fit very well. When you have township, county, sometimes the municipality's interjected. You're in Brownhelm Township, but you're also in the city, right?
Right.
The, the, I would think possibly, and I don't wanna start a feud here with Wellington, excuse me, with Vermillion and Brownhelm, but I would actually have a conversation with Vermillion.
We've called our councilmen and.
Because, quite frankly, they could clarify their borders. That, that's, that's always a possibility.
Wow.
Well, sorry.
That's a stop, yeah. They can clarify their borders.
The, the, it's, 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 it, you do not have to have township land within the side of a municipality. The, a lot of times you'll see that, but, but it's, it's, there's ways of dealing with that also. I would hope it doesn't, doesn't come to that. Usually, you know, friendly relations are, are the best way to go. But, but municipalities have a lot of authority on, on the lands that lie within municipalities. And.
I've talked to the owner, and he doesn't wanna hear it. He's got the zoning permit, so he says, "It's done deal."
I understand.
And I'm like, "Well, I've been here 15 years, and you just come in and, you know, start changing things." I guess I'll have to go back to hometown Avon Lake and, you know, but.
I would hope you wouldn't have to do that. I don't.
Yeah, you have two houses and 24 acres out there.
I don't see them really changing direction. Any, I know that, I, I, I was surprised when we learned that they were opening up that facility out there, but it's definitely more combat-type facility, a shooting range, not just an ordinary shooting range.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm not surprised you're here.
Yeah, it gets frustrating in this position sometimes, 'cause people think since we're the, the county Board of Commissioners, that we have all this jurisdiction, all this authority, and, and.
I'm looking for any help I can get.
Yeah, you get into rural areas, and it becomes a whole new ballgame.
There's no building department to cover it. It's not like being municipality.
Well, even if it was a building department, it's a zoning issue.
Right.
Maybe you would have some, some jurisdiction over structures possibly, but not over uses. The, the, that is strictly a local governance matter. And, and so, even then, we'd, we'd have no authority to dictate the zoning for the area and permissive uses.
Well, there's a meeting on August 7th of the Township Trustees, and I think it's gonna be a ruckus meeting, unfortunately, but we have a lot of irate neighbors, and I wish you all could come.
Well, you know, unfortunately, and I will, I will suggest this to you, this would have been a, retrospectively trying to change something through zoning is very difficult after people have built under an existing zoning provision. This is, this, this is gonna be very challenging for you because.
Well, I wanna see that reflected in my property value.
Right. They allowed them to do this under the existing zoning. For them to retrospectively try to change the zoning now becomes a massive issue. They usually will not prevail, even if they supported you, they usually will not prevail on a retrospective change. Counselor, you can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not gonna say a whole lot.
Well, that's true. You have to represent the township, sorry. But, so, they're probably in between a rock and a hard spot.
Boy. All right, well.
I wish we could do more for you, sir. It's not that we don't want to.
I would say that township officials have contacted me, and they're looking at it. So. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Couldn't be of more help.
Morning, Jerry.
Good morning.
We didn't get done soon enough.
You kept talking.
Did our approval rating go up since last week?
Uh, no.
Nope.
I have to vote yesterday. I've gotta give a vote now.
Gerald W. Phillips, my address, 461 Winward Way, Avon Lake, Ohio. It was a busy week. One item, dealing with the District Seven charter petitions. I was busy dealing with some legal issues on it. And this morning, I filed a protest against charter petitions. There's no question in my mind that they're illegal. And I've mentioned it a few times to people that, you know, it won't be on the ballot. I even made a guarantee it won't be on the ballot. I even tried to attempt to get some people to wager bets, but nobody wants to take it. So, looks like the Commissioners have dodged a bullet on this one, but maybe next time you won't. On the sales tax, we're out in the community talking to people. We're slightly under 10,000 signatures. We only need 7,782. Our deadline is August 9th. And there'll probably be a legality issue on this, according to Mr. Ennis. I don't think that's good, you know, for the county. It's just gonna anger the voters even more.
I think you two like to joust with each other, Jerry.
And, and it's gonna end up, it's gonna end up in a lawsuit.
Against the badge.
I mean, you can rest assured that this issue of the legality of the sales tax won't end in a 2-2 tie, because I'm sure the Republicans, that's not gonna happen, especially in light of the fact that I filed a protest, and that charter petition is clearly Republican-driven. Two weeks ago, I made a proposal about possibly, you know, resolving the sales tax issue and the dilemma as far as the bad image of the Commissioners. And the, the proposal was, you repeal the sales tax, put a new one on the ballot with specific purposes and specific funds. And I would dismiss the sales tax lawsuit, and you get to keep the $5 million. And then that $5 million, we would work out some kind of an arrangement on specific purposes that that would be spent. And that's from the feedback I've, I've gotten from the almost 2,000 signatures I've gotten from people, you know. They want accountability. They wanna know where it's going. They don't trust the Commissioners because of the way you passed it. They, they would be, have some inclination if they knew where it was going, and if there was shown to be a need, you go back to the departments, you tell them to cut their budgets and, and become frugal. They want accountability, and they don't believe that there is. You know, you pass a sales tax, two weeks, I mean, five weeks after 80% voted it down, you're gonna angry people. So, but I need a response by August 9th. I mean, I've talked to Jerry Ennis, so communicate to Jerry Ennis. If there's interest, it's, the door's open, but on August 9th, that door closes. And I'll just gear up and pursue the sales tax lawsuit. I have more incentive to pursue that sales tax lawsuit than to, to make that deal, because I'm giving up, if I'm successful, a huge amount of attorney's fees in the class action. But, you know, I'm willing to do that because I think this is the best deal for the county and everybody involved. I know the Golden Acres property is supposedly up for sale. I have a client who's potentially interested. I tried to contact the broker. I've gotten no response, so if somebody.
You can, you can tell me right now. It's not supposedly up for sale. It is up for sale.
Well, then who do I talk to? Who can I get some information?
Let me raise my hand right now.
Well, then, 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 tell me how I can get some information.
Let me raise my hand right now.
Well, you know, what's the asking, what's the asking price?
You got an offer?
Is it listed?
They're not gonna negotiate out here.
Well, it's listed, well, then, it's listed by a broker. I mean, usually I have a listing.
It's listed by a broker. I'm sorry I hasn't called you, but you can give me an envelope and an offer today. I'll, I'll give you an answer.
Well, I need some particulars about the property.
He's particulars. Okay, we're having fun right now, Jerry, but yeah, we'd love to make, somebody contacts.
Jerry, Jerry, just, just contact Sandy. I'll, I'll make a phone conversation with you.
Sandy?
But, yeah, it's up for sale. We have it listed to a broker. We were, we were trying to do it privately, but it wasn't really moving, so we did bring the broker. But, I'd love to have a conversation with you. I can give you the specifics on the property, and we can have a conversation.
The final point, you know, I thank the Commissioner Matt Lundey about the lakefront, because I have another client who's been interested in doing lakefront. So, I plan on attending the meeting in Avon Lake and see what is really the, the principles, the concepts. I mean, there's a lot of lakefront property in the City of Lorraine, which definitely needs economic stimulus. But, you know, there's gotta be an atmosphere of, of cooperation and willingness to work with developers. So, you know, and the reputation is, the City of Lorraine is too political to deal with. Certain people, if you don't, it doesn't pass their approval, nothing gets done. So, I look forward to that meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks.
Mr. Ennis, we have a copy of the protest.
Okay.
I told you I'd get you one.
Jerry, Dan said he was okay with your stipulations.
Okay.
Anybody else wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey. Aye.
Public comment.
Anybody wishing to, all you need to do is tell us your name, come up to either one of these, and, and your address, and the floor is yours.
My name is Thomas Palmer. I live in Vermillion, 1680 Cooper Foster Park Road. I'm here to voice my concerns about the Northern Ohio Tactical Training Center on Cooper Foster in Brownhelm Township. I live in Vermillion. I'm part of Brownhelm Township. I've been to five trustees meetings, five months. We're getting nowhere with any resolution. This place is just starting. It's gonna be noisy. It's disturbing. It's rapid fire. It echoes in between the railroad tracks and where I live, up on the rise. It, it's really a terrible situation, and I'm looking for some help to get something done. I mean, it should be an indoor thing, not an outdoor that all my neighbors have to be disturbed by.
I'm aware of that place.
Were you on planning when it went through or not?
No. They actually, it really didn't require a lot through the planning commission. The reason we're aware of it is we had a, we had a work on it through the stormwater district. There was a lot of issues with how they were directing stormwater when they were reshaping the land a bit out there. That's how we're aware of it. But, there's no permit requirement through the county or any of that. They're planning on doing a lot of that out there. I, I understood. I, it, and I bet you it's gonna be pretty noisy out there, but the board has.
It's disturbing noise. It's rapid fire.
The board here has absolutely no authority over any of the activities out there. That's, that's a zoning issue, and, and that belongs to the township.
But the township says they can't do anything about it because the Board of Appeals, zoning